The chiller glycol leak on the ground over Lincoln County High School. And that's one you wouldn't expect, or one of those unpleasant surprises, I guess, that you wouldn't think you'd have for another forty years or fifty. And it's going on right now, so.
Explain that to us.
Okay, well, there's two chillers in the back of Lincoln County High School. There's eight pipes that go to them, six and eight inch pipes that go to them. And we've had a leak on the ground. And, uh, and, uh, it's been going on for a couple of weeks and it's kinda occupied my time. What we've done, uh, to get those back on and get some cooling for the teachers is we abandoned the underground lines, basically. We are just gonna leave them in ground, we'll put concrete in and put it off the concrete and leave them like where they're at. And we're gonna run new lines on top of the ground to the chillers and get our glycol back in it and hopefully after spring break we'll be back in operation. The lines underground are fiberglass. All the lines above ground are steel. And on top of the fiberglass lines are concrete. So we couldn't, we couldn't beat the concrete off the line to even find them. Immediately when we noticed there was glycol in the ground, I notified Environmental Protection and everything is going well with that. We have propylene glycol, not ethylene, which is much more, uh, environmental friendly. So we're right in, I've already called the testing company, I've met with them today. And we're gonna take three samples of soil where we found the, where we know we have a leak. And we don't know even where all the leaks are. What bothers me about that whole underground situation is that you, it's, it's obvious that the ground has settled a lot over the years. So there could be, if that's what caused the leak, then chances are it's gonna cause others. So rather than have environmental protection out here again, we decided to abandon all the lines. So far, we've done the work. A couple of my guys and great guys, we've been over there taking pipes apart. We took all the glycol out of the lines. We've got them closed off in the ballroom and closed them, closed them off with the chiller and taken all the glycol out in between. And I think that the, the fact that we did report it promptly and the fact that we have remediated any future problems, I think, uh, I think we're getting some good treatment of environmental protection.
And all this has happened in ten years?
It's nine or ten.
Yeah, I mean, just roughly.
Roughly. And that's, these are lines that should be there for fifty, sixty?
Well, what about if they used plastic and hadn't used concrete? Concrete's what's broken, or it's sad.
That's my thoughts. That is my thoughts, exactly. But, you know, immediately after we found the problem, I notified ZMM, the architects of the project. I notified the installer, and they've been out there. They're supposed to give me a price on completing the work, but... I don't, I don't, I don't have a real comfortable feeling hiring somebody to put something in that I'm having trouble with after nine or ten years, so I don't think they'll be doing anything for me, just, if you don't mind.
How far in the distance are we talking, Dana? That'll be a...
Thirty foot.
On my reading.
Thirty foot with, uh, I bet you got, uh, six pipes. Like I said, two of them are, two of them are sixteen inch, four of them are eight inch lines, so. We're tearing the chiller wall down right today. That's one reason I'm gonna talk too much, 'cause I'm full of dust. We decided we could tear the wall down quicker than we could drill the holes through a, about a sixteen inch wall, so we're tearing it down. We've got us a termite over there and hauling it over and putting in some of our low-laying properties over there and making use of the concrete and block and brick. And, um, they're scheduled, uh, Simco is scheduled to drill the holes for the pipes coming through the wall of the floor. So they may be over there doing that now, if they got their equipment, so. We decided to tear one down, wall down, and, which would give us a lot of room, like we do need to repairs, do repairs on the chiller and, or do repairs on those new lines that we, we have, and there's gonna be a lot more space. And it didn't cost us any more time, and my guys were able to do that versus paying Simco, they're ready to drill them off, so. So that's why we decided to tear the wall down. But we'll enclose it, make it look nice again, we want to see the pipes. They'll be, if you've been back there, they'll, they'll run across that sidewall, which, again, I've had the fire marshal out there, he's okay with everything we're doing. We've crossed their eyes and bought their teeth, I guess, or vice versa, something like that. So we think we're on, we have a great plan to fix it, and we think we'll be back in operation after spring break. So that's why I just made that number one, since things are kinda happening unexpectedly around here. Your priorities change from one day to the next, so I didn't... So what I did try to do, I tried to put projects in green that are, projects that I'm currently trying to do before QI-1, or at least have well on their way. The projects in red are projects that I would probably anticipate that you might need to do during the next fiscal year. And then I've listed a bunch of projects in black that probably are, and I, I put them in three different phases so that you can tell maybe what I think is likely to tear up before some of the others. And I've got your, on the second page, I've got gym roofs and gym floors and bleachers, and I hadn't even started on page three yet, so, um, there's a lot of projects, as you can, can see, that probably are a little bit more urgent than, than some of the renovations that they're wanting in June. I'll, I'll give you as much detail of about any of them as you want to talk about, or...
Dana, now, it's kinda hard to see, I didn't realize there was a green if you said that. Are there five green ones?
Uh, well, there's one, two, three, four, five, six.
Six.
Six green ones. And there'll be other green ones as the next couple of months goes along, I'll add some green ones to that. Those are just some things I'm working on now. Uh, there was one I did wanna talk to you about. The one where I, uh, it's down at the bottom of the page, it says LED lighting projects. And then I've got a couple of projects there that, that I'm doing. I call the West Virginia Division of Energy, because in the past, they have given us money to help with lighting projects. They'll give us a certain percentage, we pay a certain percentage, and then sometimes, uh, we've been able to get rebates back from the power company. And there's not anything available for, right now, with regard to that. But there is, they are looking for a county to pilot an energy program. And they're wanting to use some sort of performance contracting in order to help pay for it. They're looking for a county that is, uh, in need for rural, like county, kinda close to where Charleston. So we've got a couple of things going for us already, if you're interested in this. But it would include a lot more than just lighting. Lighting doesn't have a, lighting's got a good, uh, return, but it's, what they're looking for are some energy savings in various regards. Windows, windows is not very good. Lighting's better than windows. But I think they're looking for some major projects that would include heating and cooling also. They've got a, actually, they're having a energy seminar and, and they're gonna provide some information and some classes on Wednesday. If it's something you think that you might be interested in, I will attend that. She suggested that I be there if, if it's something you wanna pursue. The, the buildings that you'd be looking for would be the older buildings like Duval, Midway, Guy Valley, Ranger. Something that you could combine a bunch of projects into one. With the performance contracting, what I know about performance contracting is they use the energy savings to pay for the loan. Now, I don't know if, by being a pilot county, that they're wanting to show this to the state, that whether there's some help from the energy department or not, I didn't go into that much detail with them, so. I don't know if there's some further assistance besides just the, the performance contract itself, or if there would be some other benefits by, by looking at some.
Thank you for the info, Dana. My fail.
Is that tomorrow, Dana, Wednesday?
Yeah, uh, it's tomorrow, March twenty-third and twenty-fourth, and she specifically said Wednesday, and I haven't even looked at the agenda, because I didn't know if it was something you'd wanna do. So I haven't really, well, I haven't had time to look at it much, I just got this like two days ago. I did get some information. I'll let you digest that and I'll talk about something else for a while.
Now, where's that taking place, Dana, Charleston?
Uh, that's in Charleston.
That's what I mean.
Capital Complex Building Six is their address. I think it's, might be at the Civic Center, 'cause I think that expo is the, expo that they have every year, I think it's at the Civic Center. But I, I haven't read this, it's, it's so new that I don't...
I mean, you think it's in Charleston, the poster?
I think it's in Charleston. And I think it might be at the Civic Center, but I, I haven't had time to even check it out, 'cause I didn't know if you'd been or...
I guess more, Mike, Dana.
Okay.
Mr. Mekip, you can talk about it, and it seems...
And then, then again, you'd have to kinda pick a building that you're gonna focus on, and of course, with the CEFP, you'd wanna look at what your priorities are and get a, pick a building that, you know, Hamlin wouldn't be real good, because we've already met some of their HVAC needs. That's one that you really don't have a long-range plan for. But by meeting some of their HVAC needs, there wouldn't be a great savings there, and I don't think that's a good building to choose. Duval would be good, and if you weren't gonna, if you're not gonna apply for money for the Midway-Duval project, and you're gonna go after money for the Guy Valley project, just as an example, Duval'd be a good one, or Midway.
Would it let you and, and Mr. Mekip talk about that, then? In your expertise there, and if you all can kinda decide if you have to, to reel that particular, is it which one at this time?
And, uh, I do have, and the company, the Gumpys helped get some companies, pull some numbers together, probably is our, our new company that takes care of our sewer plants, Cameron. And they've got some information here from some contractors and some sewer plant builders. And their costs, and they thought these costs were high, too. They've got the, uh, Duval sewer plant, this is, I've just got this today, at five hundred and ninety-eight thousand. And I think that's high, he thinks it's high, so he's talking to some other contractors and some other...
That's just for Duval?
That's just for Duval.
Not both of them?
Yeah.
Dana, can we salvage anything on those plans? I know you've appraised us on it several times. Is there anything that we can save there? In other words, can we retrofit, or would we have to go with an entire system?
I think you're gonna have to go with an entire system. I think the metal on the plants are just rusted. At some point in time, and they're already, the walls are already moving. They're, they're eventually gonna decay, and there's nothing, I mean, you might get a little bit for the metal, if you can get it cleaned up, take it to a salvage yard, but there wouldn't be more.
I wouldn't count on that.
I wouldn't count on a whole lot of that, though. Rust is pretty bad.
There's not much space there at Duval, as you know. Would, would a new plant require additional space, 'cause we're kinda cramped?
No, I don't think so. Simply because that plant was designed for number of students and staff at the time, when they actually had more numbers than what they've got now. So no, I don't think so. And Midway's the same way, with the Lawson enrollment, I, I don't think you're gonna need more space. Because that's how they, that's why Duval's costs are much more than Midway's, is they take your numbers of students and staff, figure out a flow based on those numbers, and that's what they wanna treat. So as school gets bigger, the costs get bigger. I can remember, I think, about forty thousand dollars took care of Ranger Sewer Plant back years ago. And it's not great shape, but it's not near bad.
Did you give us a number on Midway?
Um, if I gave it to you, you're not, Midway up to four hundred and thirty-eight thousand. But I, I'm like Cameron, I think both those numbers are high.
Those plants were installed at the same time, or did it?
They were.
Seventy-nine?
Uh, they were installed both in seventy-nine, based on the information that, uh...
Seventy-seven, uh, Midway was closed for, I believe, about a week because of the sewer lines, so. So it was seventy-seven, yeah, seventy-seven, I'm pretty sure.
And if they do get in such a shape that presents to, uh, if the plant won't take care of our flow, then you'd have to have somebody pump the, pump the tanks every day until we could get through the school year, get through a period of time to put, to get, get the equipment, so.
Ideally, would you see this being something that you would replace maybe over the summer in that same location?
Ideally. So hopefully, when one of those plants actually has seen its last days, it's like June first. You know, ideally, we wouldn't be having glycol leaks at this point in time.
Well, I'm getting back to what Larry had said there about the location, if you're just gonna have to be in a different location, or if you're just gonna be in the same location, obviously you're gonna have to shut it down and not use it in the meantime, right?
Right. And, uh, but those, and those costs do include taking the old plants out and disposing them. But that's still a lot more than I expected to see, and that's a lot more than I've been told in the past, so I'm hoping something, something comes out better than these two estimates here. Of course, you never know, but you actually put it out to bid and write the specifications on it, and you just don't know what you're gonna get, but at least that's information Well, all those projects on that first page are just, are just right there, ready to begin.
Over Guy Valley, without me, many of them missing, when they, I think Mr. Adams gave this reporter something brought about, were we talking about the water, going down the gymnasium walls and all that kinda thing? Has anything changed with it? Have you found anything further about all that?
No. We found some, some very minor leaks. We did some more testing and, uh, but nothing, nothing caused the kinda moisture under the floor. Now, there's, there's a sidewalk project on there that I think could help eliminate some of the water from getting under the concrete and maybe providing more moisture, because the side, uh, the sidewalks have, have settled on the side towards the building, in other words, the bridge. So all the water in that area is going towards the building, down in the ground, and then under that concrete slab for the lobby, for example. But there's no visible moisture inside the lobby, uh, no, and part of it's just concrete, so there's no extreme moisture there that would continue to go under the gym floor, and there's no way you can get there. It's going under the slab. Now, that don't mean that all that water under that slab couldn't create problems if you've got cracks in the concrete, which no doubt there are. It's, but some of that moisture, uh, is going, that's why I've got that project ranked a little higher than the Duval blocks, is because of that, especially there at the gym, uh, you know, it'd be a good idea to keep some of that moisture from going under there to begin with. And I don't know that it would help it at all, but it might.
I, I don't remember all the particulars, but I was thinking we discussed that there was a possibility that maybe there was a storm drain or something in the block.
That, that had happened at one point in time, but where Jonah, Jonah thought that maybe that had happened again. And the storm drain, the area that he was concerned about, I went back and tested that floor, it was the driest part of the floor, and it had discolored. It was, had blackened, it was under the bleachers. It had blackened, but it had, it's been like that for years, and he just didn't notice it. He didn't notice the extent of the black. And I tested it numerous places, and it was drier than even some of the places out in the plain area. So there was no moisture under that wood, and he thought that his storm drain was creating a problem at that time. And the guys that do the gym floors, they say that floor's been like that for a long time. And we had replaced a section of it that had just gotten so bad that it was, when the bleachers were out, it was gonna cause a trip hazard, and we replaced a pretty good-sized section of it. And they said it has not changed in color or done anything different since, since that was fixed.
Dana, did you, did you see, do you know what the deadline or date is that the MIPs that be handed out for those roof replacements? Did you mention already lives on it?
No, uh, I know it's in June, but I don't have...
Is it the same as the MIPs for the...
Now, say that again.
So from the money that's been set aside just for roof replacements, for SBA, when that, when that's gonna happen?
I've heard June.
June, okay. I don't know, today's article mentioned that, did you?
Where exactly I put that?
It does, it does talk about...
I think it might be the same meeting.
There's an article in the Gazette that I don't remember what it says about that.
Yeah, they was trying to get, change the way they're doing, or something, get more funding for that, yeah.
This, this article talks about the fact that they're taking this year's money, the SBA is available, as well as next year's money, for a total like seven million dollars is what they have as money to dole out. And it'd be sometime in June, but I, I didn't know if the roof, if this money was separate or not, 'cause I'm, based upon my take in the article, it sounded like it was a separate pot of money that's been set aside just for roofing projects.
It is a certain set of, I think it is money set aside just for roofing projects, but I think maybe they might do something with that at the same meeting. I just don't know, I, I've not gotten any communication from the school building authority, but I can call and check on that and give you an update later.
I do know that, that according to that article, there was over fifteen million dollars in MIP requests, and there's only seven million dollars dole out. So, I will say, Mr. Smith and I will be there in, for that. I think it's early June, when that, when that money is handed out.
Uh, speaking in modular, since we talked about a MIP, I've got the modulars on there for Midway. They're probably in the worst shape of any modulars out there. But we've done a bunch of repairs to them. We've replaced flooring, we've replaced siding, we've been putting the roofs on them, but still, they're, I mean, they've got a certain amount of life, and it's something we're gonna have to plan to get rid of, with either an addition or a new school or something. The cost I put down there was for an addition, taken out, put in an addition, even. Man, I don't think you'd want me to talk about each and every one, but ask me questions about any of them you wanna talk about. But as you can see, I think we've got four hundred and sixty thousand in capital improvements right now, Bertie, if I'm not wrong.
That's how much we have now.
Doesn't take long to...
Dana, I don't think it's three sixty, did you spend some of that, maybe?
Well, we've got some of it.
How much, now, is it four sixty?
We've got some of it tied up in the, like, if we get the MIP, we've got money tied up, but we ain't spending it, we might not get any.
It's like three hundred thousand dollars toward the project that Wes handled it.
So if this four sixty should actually improve, we, that would come in this budget?
Yes.
That's right.
But you'll get two hundred more July one, so. That figure ever don't mean a whole lot, either does it. You can see the difficulty in prioritizing projects and try, trying to prioritize how you're gonna do the money when you've got a lot of needs coming down the pipe.
Sometimes it's just going to the most urgent tasks.
Just like the glycol leak at Lincoln County High School, that's class number one. Now, next week, it, it might, it might be something else. We may have to replace the gas lines, storm drains here at this building. I know one of them's already causing holes in the parking lot, so. Bertie, I lost her car on the way home, so.
That was good.
And you can visually see them, they're just rusted out. Still pipes going under the driveway, and of course, then you're looking at placing the glycol.
A lot of people can tell by looking at the dates of when these things were first installed, the glycol ever probably in there, it, oh...
Getting on, having a field.
At Midway, you have this elevator on here. What's, what's going on with the Midway elevator?
Nothing, we had it funded one time with an MIP through the SBA, and we decided we needed a classroom worth. So it got canceled and we took the classroom instead. Uh, it just never has been done. I thought I'd put it on the list, because that building's not accessible, the second floor's not accessible, so.
What they do now, they just make it accessible where a friend can just use it?
They move, they move a class downstairs, move somebody upstairs.
Couple times.
And work it out. Third, I thought it might, I'll be on there, just so that you...
Yes, many of these items are contingent by what might happen down the road with Duval and Midway and Guy Valley.
Same thing with the gym roofs and the gym floors, and I mean, if you knew what was gonna get funded, you'd wanna spend your money on somewhere else.
A new school, that direction, with not a lot of the town.
Oh, absolutely. And then you could focus on Hamlin's gym floor, and Hamlin's gym roof, and some of the stuff that you know you're gonna have around for them.
And new school over there, glycol, a bunch of them.
Oh, absolutely. Hey, I like them both. Whatever one you wanna get money for would be just absolutely a blessing.
Yeah, that, reading that article today, I guess they're coming up with some new funding mechanisms where they're gonna provide, we could do leases and all kinds of things.
Go and rent the building.
Yeah, yes, I, you know, you can see the monies are getting tighter in the way.
I'd like to rent them those glycol lines over Lincoln County High School right now.
Any chance that there'll be any warranty claims on any of that?
Well, you get a year warranty with your building, but, uh, there's a, based on my knowledge, you'd know more about this than, than I would, that there's an implied warranty on anything you buy. In ten years' use, out of underground pipes that are supposed to be there fifty years...
It seems like this fit for its intended purpose, doesn't it?
It looks like a lawsuit could win, but you don't murder that in me.
I just think it's our walkway that probably made it a year.
Yeah. They got it, we found the problems within the first year, but, uh, an implied warranty would be, the way I would approach it, through, through local court system, that's where it'd go. Uh, in my opinion, it would go local, which would give us a chance to fight some of the installers.
Bertie doesn't like those legal fees.
Yeah, I think...
Oh, I do now, we're set right. Yeah, we're good now.
Well, and that's what you...
You get away from your time, so you'll never prove anybody at fault, so it's never the architect's fault, never the contractor put it in the way he told him to put it in, so.
It'd be difficult.
Well, there's a little thing in the law called raison d'excès, that means, there's a problem, somebody caused it.
Yeah.
Why not?
Well, good point, good point.
We didn't do it, we just paid you all to do it right.
That's right.
No, I, I mean, and my, my question really was, is it a standard that lines like this should last forty, fifty, sixty years in the industry?
Absolutely, absolutely.
What, not if the ground settles, now that?
Well, the, the, I would, I would think that in the... Well, the, the, I would, I would think that in the architectural plans, that they were supposed to be com, put on compacted soil.
You think of all that compaction we did when we built this building.
Oh, yeah, so, compaction's part of the.
Day after day.
Part of it, so, all I know is that Greg Gogden said it wasn't nothing but a muddy mess back there when they put that stuff in. My memory's not that good.
Okay, who signed off on it when it was put in there?
Well, the architect signed off of it, we had a actual clerk of works, there was an auda clerk of the works at the time, there was even a more uppity name for it, general contractor that was overseeing the whole project, so, uh, Axton Construction was overseeing the work, so, it's not impossible to recover some.
Well, it's probably something, though, where if it, if with two weeks' worth of our time and effort, or three weeks, it's repaired, and it's a permanent repair, and it's better than it was, it's probably, it doesn't make sense to pursue a legal claim.
What you'd pay for the lawyers, it's probably not.
Well, I mean, I, I live in that world, you're looking at a three to five-year process, longer depending on the jurisdiction in which you follow it, so, it's just frustrating that you see something like that, that costs probably hundreds of thousands of dollars, and every point that's been made here is valid, it's a professional architect that designed the project, professional installers that had installed it, a, hopefully, a professional designer that designed the system, and in nine or ten years, we're having to completely redo all the plumbing, that's just.
We had to replumb all the gas lines. We've had to replumb almost every gas line in that building, that's what's caused a lot of these white hairs. They leaked, they, uh, you could just work stuff on them, and they leaked, used the wrong kind of pipe.
Well, onto the good news.
Again, a little.
Well, this roof, these roof things, you know, they're not roof, but these gymnasium bleachers and floors and all, uh, obviously, you see that as not a critical thing, or...
Down the road, that's what I see, but, you know, if you want me to go do one of those, I'll do it tomorrow.
Well, there's been a lot of repairs made at the bleachers, I know at Hamlin, and also at Guy Valley, right?
Yeah, we're waiting on motor right now at Guy Valley, uh, I think they're gonna work pretty good when we get, when we get it complete, we've, uh, taken seats out, put new rows in, taken old seats and repaired other seats, and, uh, they're going in and out pretty good, so. And there's things we can do with the gym floors, we can cut out a, a place that's got moisture and bubble up, we can cut it out, put new wood in, finish it, and go along.
What would you estimate the cost of a gym floor to be?
Uh, I didn't have time to put that on there, we've got some costs, it, it's in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand.
That's what I think, just when we, generally, when we were talking.
It, it's in that neighborhood of a hundred, the gym roof's in the neighborhood of a hundred, and the bleachers are slightly less, maybe eighty, ninety in that neighborhood, so, yeah, you're talking about a lot of money for it, and I'll three, I won't put in the same time.
Did you ever get a chance, I, I think the last time we talked about this, you had some, somebody had some very preliminary numbers on using a different type of floor versus wood, I believe you talked to a couple of different schools and had a fall apart figure, or maybe it wasn't you, Dana?
It was Mr. Waltson, okay, from Guy Valley.
Okay, talked about using, I guess, the rubberized gym floors or something, and someone was wanting to look into what that would actually cost as an alternative thought. Now, I don't think it matters, I think, given the budgetary issues we have, that in the absence of a catastrophic event, we're going to be repairing damage as it did very, uh, I mean, as it develops at the, all the gyms, there are much things on here that are much higher priority in my mind, and probably everybody's mind, yours included, that need to be taken care of before, new gym floors, roofs, bleachers, et cetera.
Just like all athletic facilities, you know, all our outside fields, always, that's gonna be an issue, and if we're gonna go away, always something's gonna come up, but...
I didn't put any particulars, but I did put that on there, because there are not lots of needs in all the middle schools, as well, you know, the needs at Lincoln County High School, I mean, it's, it's overwhelming, the athletic field needs, bleachers, fields, you might end up with the line stuff, of course, those with.
Just reminded, um, did you talk to Dave Ferguson yesterday, or he called me about needing to do a couple core, core drillings?
I, I left him a message today, after I found out that I didn't need the core drilling to be done in my chiller area.
Okay.
I'm taking care of it with a, a local chemical company that's gonna go out there and take three samples, so, as soon as I found out I didn't need that company, he was giving, I called and left him a message to, to let me know who the company was, so I could do a PO to him, and for an estimated amount on what those two boreings would cost, and I haven't heard back from him.
Someone from ZMM had been on site over there within the last week or so, where we intend to be able to do a football field and track, and felt like we need to do a couple of core boreings over there, on the, you said on the end toward the river, right, where there's a lot of field?
That was my guess where they wanted it done, because there is some field on the end towards the road where the edge of the track would be, it's close, there is, there is quite a bit of field dirt in that area, and that's where I was guessing, because I don't know of any field dirt anywhere else, I don't know where else they'd be talking about.
Now, you didn't indicate to me that that would prevent them from going ahead with the specifications and the work to be done over there, I'm still anticipating getting something from ZMM this week for us to advertise for that work to be done over there at the high school.
What I'm thinking of, that, that if it does show that there's some field dirt, it hadn't settled, but hadn't had enough time to settle, that it would, it would involve a difference in how they would specify the track, for example, if it's on part of that field, you'd need deeper areas with gravel and blacktop, and you're going to have a thicker area, a thicker base, so that it doesn't settle, and you may even have some compaction, so, that's probably why they're wanting to do the core drilling, but I haven't talked to anybody, so I can't, I don't wanna speak for them.
We just need to clarify, because I guess it was our understanding a while back, that the only need would be if we wanna have a building at some point there that you would need core drilling, otherwise, but what you're saying may be different, or...
I wouldn't put a building over there, period, the athletic building has never been proposed to be over there, unless you had a concession, a small concession stand or something.
Well, I'll tell you better, if one of these days there's a complex there, and you have an athletic facility at one end, and, you know, you have bleachers and all nine yards, uh, if you were to build some type of structure like that, maybe even the, where the bleachers not, would be something that would have a lot of weight to, to do these core drilling to make sure it's supported, but maybe what you're saying, where the movement or something, you're gonna require that to, have a different field base, how much toll might even?
I don't know, I always anticipated seeing parking over there where they put that field, but, well, maybe.
Some of these renditions, we've seen at the other end, a building down, you know, some type, I don't know what they even call it anymore.
Yeah, that wouldn't be good, I don't think, unless you did, you'd have deeper footers on the building, wider footers, if they're any deeper.
At the other end, I'm thinking the pictures, but that's just, just a picture, that's all it is.
It would probably be cost prohibitive to put it over there.
Well.
But that may be, maybe that's what they're doing, I, I don't know.
I don't know, we'll have to find out.
I can let you know next knee, or next month, if you want me to come back.
Stop talking, or this client calls, anybody have any particular things, uh, other about that, if you're talking to Dana? Okay, get that all, you think?
Yeah, that's it.
All right, Dana, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. McKeon, anything else?
No.
Okay, remember the board, anything else? Okay, not then, we're gonna adjourn until April the fifth, two thousand sixteen, six o'clock, here's the county office, if you have a motion to adjourn, please.
So?
Mr. Welbers. That's that, and seconded by Mr. Baker. Oh, yes?
Yes.
All right.